Yes, Rachel Colomier.
Present.
Anne Hurst.
Present.
John LaFreniere.
Present.
Shannon Layton.
Present.
Jennifer Pallavan.
Present.
Robert Schwartz.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson is absent. Superintendent Pellegrino.
Present.
And student rep Amber Cameron.
Present.
Thank you, all present excepted.
All right, thank you, we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on, open time for the general public, is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard? Okay, recognitions by the superintendent.
So tonight, we're very happy that Amber Cameron is here with us from the high school as our student representative. This is her first meeting, and I was hoping she could introduce herself and say a couple things about herself.
Yes, of course, I am a junior at Gardner High School. I am in the drama club, I am looking to play tennis this year. I decided to become a part of the school committee because it was actually recommended by a teacher. She thought that I would be a good person for it, and once my principal told me a little bit about it, it seemed like something I was very interested in.
Excellent, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for joining.
The beginning of your political future.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion on the floor to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Mrs. LaFreniere.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schwartz, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the motion to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, I almost forgot to say that, the ayes have it. Moving on to the subcommittee reports, the finance subcommittee, Mr. LaFreniere.
Thank you, the subcommittee met on Thursday, September 15th. We reviewed the expense report, there was, you know, there's some lines that are in the negative, mostly due to salary, unbudgeted salary increases and things like that. All that stuff, money will be moved around, it'll be all cleaned up. Also, we reviewed projects, the Gardner Middle School lockers are being removed, new ones installed during the second shift. Grass fields, work between Gardner High School and the Gardner Middle School continues. Eeration and overseeding occur next week, which was this past week. It was noted that there were actually grass on the grass fields. Also, baseball and softball dugouts have been ordered. Watkins Field concession slash restroom work has begun in earnest, and foundations should be poured next week, which they were poured, correct?
Yes, yes, they're poured now.
And, let's see, Gardner Elementary School is discussed, is still being worked on, procedures such as pickup and drop off are being tweaked, that seems to be going much better than what I'd heard. And we had to, oh, an outside audit of the student activities account noted that the account thresholds were exceeded by Gardner High School, Gardner Middle School, and there has been no student activity account plan voted on by the school committee, so a plan along with increased account, a plan along with increased account thresholds was presented for review, and that was it.
All right, thank you, and I do believe that all of the lockers at the middle school are in now, correct?
Yeah, they're in the project now.
Yeah, finally. All right, moving, oh, is there any comments, questions or concerns about the report? Okay, moving on to the policy subcommittee, Mrs. Hurst.
We met on September 14th, there were recommended updates from MASC that we reviewed and discussed. We have seven policies for first read tonight, and we'll be meeting again on October 20th.
All right, any questions, comments or concerns? Moving on to the student advisory board, Amber.
Our school has done a lot of great things so far this year, within the past following weeks and future plans, we have some very exciting things going on. On October 7th, we held our band night, and with the combination of elementary, middle and high school students, we had over 200 participants, so that was really great. Our band earned an overall rating of three stars this past weekend at their first competition of the MITCA season. In our sports news, our boys and girls soccer teams now qualify for state playoffs, and our boys cross-country team still remains undefeated. In other news, we had a very successful spirit week leading up to our prep rally held on Watkins Field on September 30th to kick off our homecoming weekend. This was followed by our middle school sports teams playing that afternoon and evening, and all of our varsity sports teams playing the following day. We ended that day with a bonfire for all of our students to enjoy, and this is a great new tradition at Gardner High School. We also did this last year, and we plan on doing it in the following years. Many of our seniors participated in the senior sunrise and arrived at Watkins Field to watch the sun come up on September 23rd. It was very early and a bit chilly, but that didn't scare them off. Our annual open house was held on September 20th, and that was a big success this year. We changed up the format and allowed families to walk about the building freely to meet with teachers. All of our athletic teams and clubs set up information tables in our library, and we had raffles, snacks and other giveaways. The turnout was the best it's been in years, and feedback from families was very positive, along with the staff. In previous years, we have done a student schedule-like tour where parents can take a tour of their students, of their child's classes, and we also have like scheduled bells, so it's kind of just like the student's schedule just shortened. We have also been celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with our multicultural events to recognize our wonderful Hispanic student population, and we are also doing this by welcoming our new students that have come from Spain, they are, we have two foreign exchange students this year, and that's all.
All right, well, thank you, is there any questions, comments or concerns for Amber?
No, it sounds great, and thank you for stepping up to do this.
Of course. Thank you so much, all right, discussion items, new business, item 3438, the first reading of the policies, Mrs. Hurst.
Yeah, we have seven policies for first read, we have AC, non-discrimination including harassment and retaliation, GBA, equal employment opportunity, GCF, professional staff hiring, JV, equal educational opportunities, JFBV1, school choice, JICA, student dress, and JJF, student activity accounts.
All right, so those are included in your packet for first read, and they'll be up for second read next month. Moving on to item number 3439, declaration of surplus for 62 Waterford Street. Included in your packet was the letter from Mr. Hawke regarding the obvious surplus of Waterford Street School Building, is there a motion on the floor to declare the school building surplus?
So move.
A motion made by Mr. Schwartz and seconded by Mrs. LaFreniere to declare Waterford Street School located at 62 Waterford Street surplus to the school's department's needs. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just a comment that I have, on the last line, I think Mr. Hawke's put down, it talks about the central office trailer. I was around long enough, that's not a trailer, those were portable classrooms. I'm a bit of a historian now.
Well, that's good. Any other discussion?
I do want to mention that it's probably going to be until December 1st for us to get out all of our stuff, because it's still filled with stuff, so I think there are desks and chairs that have been declared a surplus, but there's a lot of technology equipment and equipment that we will need to get out of there.
That's the stuff that we declared surplus last month or the month before.
Right. All right, I guess we'll take a vote on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 3440, it's a vote to accept the student account activity projections for GHS and GMS and to set accounting, checking account limit for both schools at 30,000. During the finance meeting update, you had heard about the student accounts as part of the audit that was done. We have to vote on these now with these recommended limits, and that's based on what is needed and what's going to be the money that's going to transfer in and out of that account during the school year. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move, second.
Motion made by Mrs. LaFreniere, seconded by Mr. Schwartz, is there any discussion on the motion?
Just a question, I probably shouldn't ask this, but I will anyway. How are the student activity funds funded, is it through the general budget?
Through the general budget, student accounts, no, they're not funded through the general budget. Student accounts are typically fundraisers and things like that.
Oh, okay, that's all I want to know.
It can be a combination, but yeah, then like for the AP exams and certain things, there's money coming in for yearbooks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so motion made by Mrs. LaFreniere, seconded by Mrs. Schwartz, any other discussion? All right, we'll put that matter to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 3441, the superintendent's goals. Last month, we had the goals in our packet, and Superintendent Pellegrino did a presentation on that. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the superintendent's goals? Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Mrs. Ward-Layton, without the name tags, I was. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 3442, the new school building, school improvement plans progress for Gardner Elementary School, Mr. Martin.
Present here, does that work? Good evening, everyone, thank you for allowing me to present, just an update on the progress at Gardner Elementary School and just some of our strategic objectives for the year. Actually, go back for one second. So, the motif, I guess you'd call it, for the school is that we would be the school in the woods, and you can see that design featured here and the bricks that are jutting out in the pattern of a tree. So, I'll reference that a few times throughout, so I wanted to just mention, thanks. So, there were some challenges at the beginning of the year, which I know many of you are well aware, the earliest one being that we had to get our certificate of temporary occupancy before moving in, and then that made the move-in, a very intense move-in, and so much so that there you see the superintendent who came in over weekends to help with moving boxes, and there is some of the administrative staff on our first day of the new elementary school. And I will say, the thing that was so impressive about this early move-in and this scramble to make sure we were ready in as early, or you know, quick as possible, was that the staff just so embraced the idea that we're in this brand-new, beautiful building, and that, and they did it with a smile. And so, I just featured, if you want to click ahead, you know, some of the staff in front of the, I thought, very appropriate orange moving boxes, given our school colors there, just in a real great mood despite all the labor that was involved. The other biggest challenge, which I believe was just alluded to, was the, how we were going to get our 991 students in and out of the building every day, and it's really, there aren't too many schools in the state that have that many elementary students, there are, you know, high schools, middle schools that might have that amount, but our kids are so dependent on either parents and caregivers dropping them off and picking them up, or us even just ushering them to points in the building. And so, we went with the traffic engineers' design to start, which, you know, seemed very reasonable, and I don't want to blame the traffic engineers, because I definitely had my eyes on it, it said, this seemed like a nice pattern, we had section for the buses and things of that nature, but it just didn't account for how, the sheer quantity of parents that were going to be dropping off and picking up their kids. And so, there is my second go at it, which we implemented a few weeks ago, which is a new traffic pattern, which a much longer, much longer area for families to wait to move into the drop-off or pickup zone. It was commented by someone that that picture encapsulates my first month at the school, just the sheer amount of directions and other things involved, which I thought was very true. And so, so I took a picture today of this traffic pattern, you can see there is the access road to Gardner High School, you can see the traffic lined up, it does go all the way out through Catherine Street, and, but it's nice that we, you know, we can get from the start of us moving the kids out of the building until the last parent picks up their child or drops off, we have it down to about 20 minutes. Our goal is to shave off five minutes more to make it the 15-minute dismissal and arrival window, to make it fit in that. And also, you know, and you might not think this progress, but that parking lot was not paved at the start of the school, it was actually a staging area for a lot of our construction folks, so that is a parking lot which has definitely ameliorated some of the traffic or parking issues, so. The outside work is nearly complete, in certain areas, there's still some in other areas, but you can see the nice new sign on the left there for the, as you drive right up to the school, it looks like a little bit of digital display and wording that we can put there. And then, there's the front of the building, the beautiful glasswork, and again, to the, kind of, to the school in the woods theme, there is our entry to the school sign there in wood, which I thought was cool, and it's at both the entrance on Pearl Street and the entrance onto the access road. So, it's really nice, someone did joke that, they asked if the wood, plywood that's covering some of the windows in there that were broken during the shipping was also tied into that theme, and I assure you that it was not, that they will be fixed, and it will be, when it was put in, soon. Some of the outside work has been the big focus of a lot of the construction folks at this point. The picture on the left is the new sod that was put in on one of our back areas leading up to the playground, one of the new playgrounds that will be installed, and this area on the right I thought was really cool, it's the front of the building, it's to the left if you're facing the school in front of our A Wing, and it's called the Summit Garden, and you can see there some flower beds for gardening, there's also, and I don't quite know how it's all going to configure, but my understanding is that it's a space where teachers can actually take their kids outside and do some lessons outside in different other activities that the kids can sit around and actually, you know, hear the teacher. I plan on doing a puppet show on the platform at some point, but also, it's a really cool opportunity for us, our kids to learn, you know, about nature and gardening and things of that nature. Our STEM teacher has already talked to me about incorporating the gardens into his class, which I thought was really, really cool. And the playgrounds are the most anticipated element of the school, they are not there yet, but you can see there on the left is swing sets, my wife was thrilled when she saw the swing sets being installed, because some elementary schools don't have them, but she, as an occupational therapist, really appreciates the kids who are able to use the swings, it really does have a benefit to kids, especially those with sensory issues, it really helps to, I feel she referred to it as vestibular sensory input, so it's a really kind of cool thing that we have, our swing sets, and my favorite sport is basketball, so I was thrilled to see the outdoor hoops put up, and again, as part of our theme of a school in the woods, and I remember the architects talking about this several years ago, the slides will actually be incorporated into the landscape, which I think is a really cool feature of the new school, and you can see there, obviously, we have some fill to put in and other things, but there's one of the slides, and there's a platform that's recently been installed behind there, so. And, oh, sorry, there's the platform that, you know, obviously still has some work to go, but it's getting there. And I know a lot of you have seen pictures at various points, but the design and interior of the school is just amazing. You can see, that is the picture of our cafeteria on the left, the cool light fixtures, it's just such a bright space. We've even commented about when we're doing, one of the least favorite duties of any staff is lunch duty, and to, the sound is absorbed, there's, it's just a really great place for the kids to eat and socialize. I think probably the most beautiful room in the whole building is our media center slash library, and you can see there the tree, you know, keeping with the theme, but also the window display, and kind of some of the unique seating areas, it's just, it's a really great feature to the school. Other nice touches, there is one of our music rooms on the second floor, and, you know, one of the other things that, and you can probably gather this from looking at the pictures, it's so bright, the school is just filled with light, which just has such a positive effect on mood for the kids. There's a little reading cubby seating area, I actually was walking by that today, I wish I thought of snapping a picture. There were a couple kids sitting down reading, and, you know, I love the mural design in the back, and then on the right, you can see that goes up three floors on our A Wing, and it's just a really, you know, beautiful design. There's a lot of beautiful glasswork, which you've already seen, there is a picture of one of our bathrooms, and there's a lot, you can't really see it that well, with the nice glasswork, tiling, then there's also just a lot of this stained glass sprinkled throughout the building. And there's a picture for one of our art rooms, you can just see what a gorgeous view the kids in that art room have every day. The most, the area that piques the most interest of the kids as they pass by is our gymnasium, there it is probably three weeks ago, and you can see the nice shine of the newly laminated, or not, I forget what they call the, what they put over the hardwood, but it's sparkling, and then, now they've been adding the matting along the, around the sides, you can't really see it all that well, but that's a climbing wall on the left, and then the bleachers just need to be assembled. Hey, Mayor. Here are just some pictures, I snapped of some classrooms in action, you can see there's some kindergartners on the left, just thrilled to show me their work they were working on when I walked in, you can see there's the STEM teacher, he has a gorgeous view from his room, and then to the right is just another lesson taking place. And then, lastly, I just wanted to kind of conclude with, there's, on the left is the beautiful mural that is painted under our main stairwell, and we have some really ambitious, and I think noble goals this year. And our biggest goal and our vision is that every community member, kids first and foremost, but also staff and families and business members throughout the community, everyone experience joy, achievement and care as part of our school. And a lot of times, folks think achievement and joy are mutually exclusive, I very much believe they complement each other, and then, obviously, in elementary school, where folks and students experience care is just an essential component. So, how we do this, we are highly focused on a rigorous and engaging curriculum, and we, I reference this in my school committee reports, every week, we do a lot with our teacher leaders during their common planning time to decide on ways to enhance lessons, to make sure that every kid gets what they need when they need it, that's, you know, referencing our multi-tiered systems of support, so tier one, every kid is getting a high-quality, rigorous and curriculum, and then our tier two and tier three supports, based on data, we are giving kids extra supports where they need it, so that every kid can achieve. And, you know, the care and our social-emotional learning of our kids, that just is intertwined through everything we do. Positive relationships, we set a goal that every kid by the end of the year are going to be able to tell their teachers in a survey that they believe there are three adults, 100% will say there are three adults who they feel care about them, and have a, they have a good relationship with, I think, you know, that's, it's research proven that that helps kids succeed, but it's also just, it's common sense. I'm very fond of the phrase that compassionate care, we take a trauma-informed approach, we know some of our kids have trauma in their lives, but yet we want to exude this compassionate care for all of our kids. Social-emotional learning curriculum and strategies, bullet number three up there, we are very intent on making sure that our tier one, meaning every kid receives its social-emotional learning curriculum, is implemented and done with fidelity this year, that's one of our goals. But then also, we meet, we have a tier two social-emotional learning meeting, we have a tier three social-emotional learning meeting, and we have a tier one social-emotional learning meeting, and in those meetings, we analyze data, they're called actually MTSS meetings, because we analyze data, we look at ways we can give kids what they need when they need it. So, we're always looking at data to do that. And that's it? Does anyone have any questions about the new school, I'd like to answer.
Just a comment, Hurst, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Really great.
Appreciate it, thank you.
That ugly thing in the front of the school is a generator, huge generator, terrible looking. Maybe it'd be either grades three or four, or the whole school would come up with an idea, and how to make it look pretty.
That's a great idea, yeah, no, I agree, there's, yeah, so the Generac might take offense, but there's definitely more beautiful ways to decorate that than what they have going, so.
Just the fireboxes and traffic control boxes.
No, absolutely, yeah.
From the city, that are really pretty, and I first, when I first saw that, I said, who's screwing around with those? Finding out it was the mayor's project.
Previous mayors.
But, that's just a thought, to try to make that ugly thing look pretty.
I know sometimes too, the Boy Scouts, or Eagle Scouts, I should say, need projects and stuff, that's another avenue, but no, thank you, I appreciate that.
I do think there's some landscaping planned for around there though, so.
Oh, okay.
I remember us having discussions about hiding it, so.
Oh, good, oh, good, so maybe a tree or a bush or something.
But you could still do that.
It'll take a few years to hide them. Just a suggestion, you did a great job.
Oh, thank you, thanks, I appreciate it.
I've heard nothing but positive about this, and it is just, every time I see it, I'm just like, you know, it is beautiful, and how lucky are we to have this for our students, and how lucky we aren't to have you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that, yeah.
You know, to, yeah, I mean, you can just see in the pictures, people are happy, they seem, you know, there's always going to be glitches, it's like when you're building a house for yourself or remodeling, you know, you just live with the stuff that's there, but nobody's talking about any of that stuff publicly, other than in a meeting, you know, and parents are just all about how great their kids feel, and what's like, even traffic.
I will say from a parent perspective, the new way is so much better, the first way was very, it was, it was very tricky.
Oh, it was.
It was very, it was hard, but I picked up my youngest yesterday, not yesterday, today, and I was all the way down at the end of Catherine Street, and it only took, it took less than 20 minutes for me to get, to get her.
Oh, great, good.
So, I think you guys are, I think, and the staff is doing a great job making sure that people are moving along, pulling it all the way up, so, you know, that's, it's, everyone is doing a really wonderful job, and you can tell, because people are smiling and, you know.
It'll just get easier as the kids go on.
Yes, and then another wrench, but still, it's, it's beautiful, it's wonderful.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. We are going to be asking vacant construction to get a reimbursement from the, from the traffic engineers to actually pay for it. It's the last time I listen to those engineers. No, the, I appreciate it, no, and I agree, I, you know, when we implemented it at Waterford, it took a while before it got going, and, you know, there are glitches, but yeah, we'll get there.
I know we will.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, item number 3443, college and career readiness coordinator update, this was included in your packet for information, are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, moving on to item number 3444, curriculum coordinators update, this was included in your packet for information, is there any questions or comments from the committee? Moving on to item number 3445, grant administrators update, this was included in your packet for information, are there any questions? This was included in your packet for information. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Just, just vote, vote for the students. I think it's online, right?
Yes.
That you can, you just have to vote for students to receive those funds, I think, ends the 18th, so. It's very, it's, it looks like it's pretty competitive between the finalist schools, so.
Next. Item number 3446, special education update. This was included in your packet for information. Any questions from the committee? Moving on, item number 3447, CPAC update. Mrs. Hurst.
There were eight parents that attended the CPAC informational session on September 21st, and there were three that expressed interest in becoming officers. So there's a vote that's going to be held tomorrow, actually, at a meeting at 6 o'clock. Is there anything else, Joyce?
6 o'clock, yeah. We made sure we kept the notices out that are going to be held.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Item number 3448, the new school building project update. I think we just got that from Mr. Martin, but Dr. Bellagreeno, anything?
No, he gave us the inside scoop.
Item H, communications. Dr. Bellagreeno.
Just a few things, you know, there's a lot going on as you know in the district, you know, the new school, the construction that's going on, all the different things. I do want to mention too, Becky McCaffrey scored a big win for the district where she's actually including, this was sent out to you in an email, but telehealth, and it's not just telebehavioral, this is telehealth, health. So physical health, where nurses can actually talk with a healthcare professional, I think it's a registered nurse. So they can actually get some healthcare if they, if they, do I say it wrong?
Because they can then write the prescriptions.
Thank you. So, so it's just going to expand access for those who want to participate in the program. Maybe so kids can miss less school time and have immediate access and not have parents have to get out of work if they don't have to. So I'm really excited about that. Additionally, we'll be, we'll be having an equity audit from Boston College, the doctoral program. One of, one of, one of my goals has been, as a superintendent, is to make sure that we have a community of care. So they'll be doing everything from looking at our data, focused on our marginalized populations, students with special needs, English language learners, students from low-income families, and our students of color. And looking at disparities and outcomes for those students. But they'll also be talking with students, they'll be wanting, they're, we're going to set up interviews with some CPAC parents as well as our LPAC parents, so they can gather some information and just give us some candid, transparent informations to inform how we move forward to, again, make sure we're creating a community of care throughout Gardner Public Schools. I was really excited that band night went off, even though the football, because of COVID, again, COVID, you know, so many kids were out and they couldn't have a football game. But they had a great band night, and I was so pleased with how flexible everybody was. And I have to say that the stands were still packed. I was really, really pleased to see that and have that go off without a hitch. I do want to apologize to families. You know, one of the things Ms. Calley keeps telling me about and reminding me is that we did switch to a new information system called Power School, and it's definitely had some glitches. I was working for a few hours today with some tech people and some guidance counselors to make sure the transcripts are running smooth and we can calculate GPA and all that other fun stuff. So that created definitely some havoc, because we're not communicating as well with families right now, because not everything's up and running. But once it gets up and running, this system is so much better and smoother. I'm really excited to be moving toward this, but I do want to apologize to those folks because I know we haven't been as easily communicative as we usually are. And finally, I just want to again, you know, thank the administrators, both at the district level, at the building levels, and families, teachers, staff. Everybody's been so flexible. And I have to say, you know, with, you know, having a new school, there were a lot of, a lot of things. We still have a long punch list. This is not going to be closed out for a long time. Teachers were down to pop ears. Although people reminded me, it was very pleasant, and quite frankly, they are so happy to be in this new school. And I think, you know, right now we're still in the honeymoon phase in terms of how well things are going. But teachers have been so flexible and have bent over backwards for the kids and to make sure that things have gone very smoothly. But I do want to thank you all in the city of Gardner for the school, because it's definitely a place that our kids and our staff deserve. With that, I'll wrap up my communications. Thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the committee? Moving on to final comments of the school committee, Mrs. Ward-Layton.
I know it's, it's been said the whole meeting, but just the atmosphere and the mood of the city around the new school. And, you know, I was just, I had been talking to a few fellow elementary parents, and I just want to commend Principal Martin and Dr. Bellagreeno and the whole district staff, all of the elementary school staff, because, I mean, from, from my perspective as a parent, but also I know the community, they felt informed. They felt confident in the ability of the district to roll things out, even with the beginning-of-year hiccups and the supply chain issues and all of this. So just, it, it, it's been a little bit of a, it seems wonky from behind the scenes, but it looks, you know, it's, there's confidence and there's competence, and it's showing up in the way that parents are responding. And that's good for everyone. It's good for the kids. It's good for us. It's good for everyone, so. And I'm, I'm looking forward to poking around on Thursday. My daughter's very excited to show me everything.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Hurst.
I can't even begin to tag on anything because Shannon said it all, but, um, excuse me. I wanted to welcome Amber. It's nice to have you here. I really feel it's an important thing. And Mike, weren't you in the seat?
I was, I was. That's what I was going to say in my final comments, but welcome.
Voting is coming up, too, elections, and it's really important for people to get out and vote. And, you know, we've had a really great representative in John Zlatnik. He's been very, I want to say, he, he just easily, he's always willing to listen. He's a great advocate for, you know, these towns that are on the other side of 495. You know, when I first met John, I was still doing disability advocacy, and he said to me, "You know this, and I'm going to be asking you questions." So, I mean, he's a great guy to work with. He's, you know, and he works together with the mayor and the city council. He's really made some, he doesn't forget his hometown, so.
Thank you. Attorney Plaeben.
I was just going to mention the open houses. I know Amber had commented on it. But from what I heard about the high school, and then I did attend the middle school open houses, it was amazing how many families were there. I think, what, the past two years, I think we've had to do remote. So this was really, I think it was really great to have the families come in, to have them walk around the building and to go through that process. And obviously, I think the elementary school is Thursday night.
Yeah, and it's staggered.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
I think that, you know, it's just a blessing to be able to have the families come. And honestly, like even as a parent, to see other families that, you know, you hear about, but you never really get to interact during COVID and that, so this has been really good. And I also got to attend the band night, and it was amazing. And I, I did hear some parents say that based on how everyone responded that night, that they, their kids that maybe were there but weren't sure because they were getting nervous about band are looking forward to continuing on and continuing with band now. So I think it's really great, and they just felt so supported there too, so lots of good things still going on.
Amber. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I think that this town is just doing like amazing things. Like I think that we've come a very long way when it comes to our town and our schools and the people that are represented. I'm very pleased to be one of those people. I think that Gardner High School is a great school. We've come a long way. I'm very pleased to be representing it. And I'm very pleased to meet all of you today. It was very nice. And I'm thrilled to be doing this for the rest of my training here.
Thank you. Mrs. Schwartz.
I always knew that we supported a home study program for the kids in Gardner, but I never knew how many were there, and it's great to find out. There are 120 students. And 10 kids re-enrolled back into the high school. I thought that was, now the other 120 have got to think about coming back to the high school. So I think that's great. Also great to see that there are, if I add it correctly, there are 190 students that have enrolled in an early college program. I thought that's fantastic, something that we never had when we went to school, but I thought that was terrific. And our grants administrator, looking at her report, there's a lot of money in the works. Keep her, keep her working hard. She's doing a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. Mrs. LaFrenia.
Thank you. I just want to thank Earl for the presentation tonight. That was great. And keep up the good work. I know it's a huge undertaking, opening that school and keeping it going as smooth as it is going right now, so. Appreciate that, and welcome, Amber. I think you'll enjoy it. Make sure you bring lots of good news.
Thank you. Mrs. Quamier.
I just wanted to welcome Amber as well. Thank you for doing this. It's a very important role, and we really appreciate having you here. We covered a lot of positivity tonight, and I think I'm just going to echo everything that everybody else has already said, and hopefully keep moving in this direction.
Thank you very much. I just want to close by one apologizing for being late today. It was with Lieutenant Governor Palito. And our event, our meeting went a little longer than we expected, and then I had to drive home in traffic. But I'm glad I could make it, and thank you to Attorney Plaeben for starting the meeting for me there. But I'm glad I was able to join everyone. And Amber, welcome aboard. It's 10 years ago this year that I sat in your seat, actually, so I feel old, but.
My kids.
Looking forward to getting your perspective on the committee. It's actually, like I said, the last meeting that we're here, it's really special in Massachusetts to have something like this. It's actually required by law for us to be able to get that perspective, because it's good to get. The ideas that we're talking about bounced off of someone who's actually going through it day in and day out as a student in the school. So I'm looking forward to working with you over the course of the next year. And I also just want to say a thank you to everyone who's been involved in the open houses and band night and the other events that have been going on. You went to band night. You felt the energy that was there. As a former bando, I'm just happy to hear that we have 200 students enrolled in Gardner Elementary School's band this year. But not just the band, but all the other different programs we're offering, our choral programs, the different sports programs that we're offering, the clubs and stuff. You can see all the work that the students are doing. And when I attended Gardner High's open house, you could just feel it in the air too. So it was really exciting to see just the excitement that's around this school year after the nervousness that started with the past two school years and not knowing how we were going to open, if we could open and things like that, to feel things coming back was just a very special feeling to have in our school districts there. And I just want to end by reiterating Ms. Ward-Layton's point from earlier that we do have a couple more days until the 18th to vote for the $50,000 for Gardner High's manufacturing program through St. Gobain Manufacturing. So if you want to figure out how to vote for that, you can go to this Gardner Public Schools website and Facebook page. And let's bring home the money for Gardner.
What is meant by "do you want"?
It is true, so make it count. With that said, there are no executive sessions this, this evening, so to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Just a second. Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, taken by Mrs. LaFrenia. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Naye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. See you next month.